I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Laverne Planning Commission meeting, January 28th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum. First item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from November 26th, 2024, regular meeting, and January 14th, 2025, meeting.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. We do not have any public comments this evening. For item number three, I will be turning it over to the city attorney, Ms. Driver.
Thank you. Happy to open the floor to any nominations for a chairman for this next year.
Nominate your Corbin.
Second.
Mr. Corbin, do you accept?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Corbin.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you like me to take over?
Yes, please.
Item number four, a motion to nominate and elect a vice chairman for a one-year term.
Motion nominate Jason Cole as vice chairman.
I have a motion for Mary Cole. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number five, motion to nominate and elect secretary for a one-year term.
Nominate Alderman Coats.
We have a motion for Alderman Coats. I will second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. On to business. Item number six, recommendation to the board of mayor and aldermen for subdivision acceptance at Caruthers Crossing Phase Two. Property located off Caruthers Road requested by SEC Inc., a PDR planned density residential zoning district. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. And real quick, before we get started, I know we have the elections tonight, so I want to make an announcement about the training this Saturday morning at 8:00 AM. So it'll be from 8:00 to 12:00 for all planning commission and board of zoning appeal members. And we'll provide lunch, and it's at 5175 Murfreesboro Road, which is our office. So if you have any questions, just please get with me or Jake. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
So the next item is recommendation to the board for subdivision acceptance at Caruthers Crossing. And this is Phase Two of Caruthers Crossing. So moving on to the photos of the site, you can see there on the screen some of the existing homes that are currently there at Caruthers Crossing. There's another photo, homes, and then this shows some of the common area as well. And then this is the plat. Phase Two is 132 lots, and it appears that there are no staff comments remaining on this item. Is that right, Mr. Logan?
That's correct.
So that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. With any comments from the board?
Just to confirm, everything's been taken care of?
Everything has been taken care of, yes, sir.
I will make a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the board of mayor and aldermen.
We have a motion for a favorable recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, final plat, Sand Hill Villas, seven residential lots on 0.87 acres requested by Brian McCain. Property located on Sand Hill Road, tax map 14, parcel 48, R3 high-density residential zoning district, property owned by Sand Hill Partners LLC. Mr. Logan.
So this is a request for final plat approval at Sand Hill Villas? And Mr. Brian McCain is requesting this tonight on behalf of his client. This plat is approximately .87 acres, so it's not too large. You can see it there, outlined in blue in the middle of the screen. This is on the north side of Sand Hill Road, and it's just east of the fullway stop there at Sand Hill Road and Dick Buchanan Street. Let me go a little bit closer view here again. It's .87 acres, and it does have existing townhomes, really on all sides except across the road. So there's a lot of townhome development in this area already. And the zoning, this green color designates R3, which is high-density residential, which of course allows townhomes and apartments. And these are some site photos. Again, rooftops in the distance are the existing neighboring townhomes. There's one more photo. So now on the screen is the plat, so you can see the arrangement of these seven lots. And there is a common driveway, so there's more or less two ingress egress locations, and then the private drive that'll go across the front of each of these lots. And don't...
This is one of the ones I need to speak to.
Oh, okay. There's one comment under engineering, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Light. Thanks.
And the comment was a mistake. They actually have addressed the comment, and you'll see in your packet, they did provide the performance bond with three signed estimates, and we concur with it, $16,200.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? If none, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight, final plat Arbor Ridge, Section Five, 35 lots on 15.85 acres requested by SEC Inc. Property located on Waldron Road, tax map 32, part of parcel 4.04, PDR planned density residential zoning district, property owned by Brookfield Holdings Arbor. Mr. Logan.
So this request is for Arbor Ridge, and this is Section Five, final plat being requested by SEC. So here in the middle of the screen is a property, and this is 15.8 acres, more or less. This is Waldron Road that it fronts, and then this roof here, the white roof, is Rock Springs Elementary School at the Lake Road intersection. And this is a closer view of the property. So you can see just the bottom left corner, the parking lot for the elementary school, and then the curve there in Lake Road, or excuse me, in Waldron Road. And this zoning is planned density residential. And then, of course, this development is a single-family, as well as some commercial parcels that will develop later, but the PDR has different uses in it. And here's some site photos from the last week or so. And some more earthmoving and grading going on. And then this is the retaining wall. Just at the top here, you can see the guardrail on Waldron Road. So this retained wall is next to Waldron Road. So looking closer at the plan, you can see Section Five in your packet. It's this grayed out section here. And then this is the arrangement for the lots. There's 35 lots in this section, and there is a cemetery that's marked here in the common area, an old cemetery that's marked. Let's see, I think I've covered most of the details. They're all shown sidewalks, correct width on all streets, and there's no planning comments remaining, and I believe all the others are taken care of.
Performance bond again.
Oh, excuse me. Performance bond.
In your packet, there is a performance bond, three signed quotes, total of $99,207. Staff finds it in compliance with the subreg requirements. In addition, I believe you all had a question last time, wanted it confirmed that the right-of-way and the common area were sufficient for the ultimate widening of Waldron Road. We did verify that it is.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments for staff?
Gary, quick question. The section that is basically going to be catty-cornered to Lake, where it's not directly across from Lake, I know we're talking about moving Lake to match up with that, but are they're building everything that's on their property side, right? That's in the gray?
They also have, in their construction drawings, do you have a, can I see the flicker there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In their construction drawings, since they're ahead of us, they are also building this across to the existing Waldron Road.
Okay.
So there is temporarily going to be kind of an offset there, which we're going to have to get the signage right on. But so that's what they're doing to keep their project moving until while we get this done.
They're not building that portion.
No, they're not building this. So yeah, we will be building that, and they stopped right there.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, final plat Arbor Ridge, Section 10, 102 lots on 16.32 acres requested by SEC Inc. Property located on Waldron Road, tax map 32, part of parcel 4.04, PDR planned density residential zoning district, property owned by Brookfield Holdings Arbor. Mr. Logan.
So this request is for Section 10, which is 102 lots of Arbor Ridge. This is final plat approval request, and you can see on the screen, so this phase or section will be a little bit deeper in the property. It's east of the last agenda item. And this section is 16.3 acres, and they are planning on 102 lots in this area. There's a closer view of the property. So these homes that are showing up here are actually in Smyrna, so this line is the boundary between Laverne and Smyrna. You can see that again when you zoom out. And again, zoning is PDR planned density residential. And then these are some, the same photos from the previous item, and the retaining wall, of course. So again, this section 10 is this item, and then just to the west was Section Five, which we did previously. And this slide will show the layout of the lots. There is also cemetery here, shown, an older cemetery in this section in common area. Aye. And so with 102 lots, they've split it into two slides, so this is the remaining part of the lots as you go down Dalia Drive. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Light. Thanks.
Okay, again, in the packet, you'll find the performance bond estimate, three signed quotes, total opinion of probable cost $193,278. Staff considers it in compliance with the subregs.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
I do, just to do, on the three-letter credits, we only showed two in the packet.
Barlow?
Unless I'm missing something.
Volunteer.
And Volunteer Park paving.
Well, that, sir, is my fault. They did submit three.
Just confirm the third one was signed?
Yes, sir. I've learned, Mr. Coats. I've learned.
Thank you, Mr.
Satisfactory, sir?
Yes, sir. With that, I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10, final plat Mission Hills, Section One, 15 lots on 3.69 acres requested by SEC Inc. Property located on Waldron Road, tax map 29, parcel 22.02, R3 high-density residential zoning district, property owned by Meritage Homes of Tennessee Inc. Mr. Logan.
So this is the request for Mission Hills, Section One, final plat, and you can see the property there on the screen. And this is also south of I-24 on the east side of Waldron Road, and you can see the top there, Charter Place, and some of those industrial properties closer to interstate come into view. So then a closer look at this phase, and this is Waldron running north and south on the left side of the image. This property's owned R3, which is high-density residential. So there, again, with this project, there is a mixture of housing types proposed that are allowed in R3. So here's some early photos from the grading that went on on the site. Some very wooded site, lots of trees. And then here's one of the main access point there from Waldron Road. So this is a small section. It's only 15 lots. It's 3.7 acres, and a new street will be constructed called Vanguard Drive, and it looks like all these lots are on the south side of Vanguard. And there's no staff comments, except for Mr. Light, so I'll turn it over to him. Thanks.
Okay. Once again, we take a look at the Waldron Road widening. The right-of-way line is moving maybe a foot, so it's fine. We have this open area. There's our slope easement is going to come down into here and out, so there's plenty of room in there to take care of the present design of Waldron Road widening. The performance bond in your packet, I double-checked this one right now, there are indeed three quotes. They are signed, and the estimated probable cost $75,659. Staff considers this complete and in compliance.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments? With none, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11, site plan, 483 Dick Buchanan Street, resurfacing an existing site of 4.14 acres requested by Kim Lee Horn. Property located at 483 Dick Buchanan Street, tax map 14, parcel 67, I-1 light industrial zoning district, property owned by Jardian iOS. Mr. Logan.
This is a site plan request at 483 Dick Buchanan Street, and you can see there on the screen, the property outlined in blue. This is just north of the Carter Lumber and the Mezner trailer storage sites, which are on the opposite side of the road, but it's in that vicinity. This property's owned I-1, which is light industrial. And with this site plan, they are requesting to make improvements to the existing parking areas and driveways located at this site, and this site is 4.14 acres. So there's the existing building in the distance, and there's a closer picture here of it. The access for this site is from a private driveway that gives access both to 43 and other properties just to the west. So you'll see the gravel and some of the older pavement there on that access easement. And there's one more photo. This is looking north, so Dick Buchanan Street's over here to the right. And they're not making any changes or proposing any changes to this existing building. This is all parking lot improvement. So you can see there on the plan, zoom in a little. So most of these features are all being proposed to remain, but they are adding a double batuminous surface and surface treatment for the existing parking lot. They do have adequate parking, and they are showing an ADA accessible space as well. And I don't believe there's any anything else. I didn't mention that the existing building is 10,000 square feet, so that give you an idea of that building. There's no staff comments, so that completes the report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
I just wanted for the staff, we obviously blacktopped a large service area. We satisfied with the drainage, with the calculation of far as where the ones would go to?
Yes, they submitted drainage calculations to us, and although it's not technically required the way we interpret our stormwater management ordinance, they have worked with us and are putting some water quality treatment down there in the, up here. And so it'll be very similar to the 400 Sand Hill project, where we got some benefit there just from working with the developer.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12, site plan Trinidad Benham Corporation Parking Lot Improvements, improvements to existing lot consisting of 17.63 acres requested by Barge Design Solutions, property located at 140 and 148 International Boulevard, tax map 17, parcel 2, I-2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by Trinidad Benham Corporation. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So this is a request for parking lot improvements as well, site plan approval. This lot is the Trinidad Benham property located at the end of International Boulevard, and it's 17.63 acres. And you can see there on the screen, so this large white roof is the existing Trinidad facility, and then they, of course, have purchased the Public Works facility, City Laverne Public Works property, and they'll, Trinidad Benham will take this property over when the city moves to the new Public Works building later this year. So zooming in, here you can see close-up view of their building. It's a very large building. And then this is International to the south and the traffic light at Waldron. And of course, Hurricane Creek runs to the west, as well as there's a CSX spur to this The zoning is navy blue, which is I-2 heavy industrial zoning. And here's existing photos, so this is the City Laverne Public Works building currently, and the sign there, the monument sign out front. And then in this picture, we're looking between the two buildings, which is City Laverne on the left and the Trinidad Benham facility on the right. So they are proposing, again, parking lot improvements, including resurfacing the current property that's been the city's property. So they'll be resurfacing that and installing other improvements, including fencing, wheel stops, and they will be installing recycled asphalt or pavement, including on this key, the recycled asphalt is in the green area, and then the heavy-duty asphalt is the darker gray, which is the bulk of the remaining part of the site. And then the blue is just the existing Public Works building. And this one, again, they're not making any changes to any buildings or structures. The parking is adequate. They're providing at least 15 where 13 are required. Other than that, the landscape plan, that note should have been removed, so there's no planning comments left, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Light.
There's no engineering comments, I don't believe. Correct. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 13 has been withdrawn, correct, Mr. Logan?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So item 14, set bond amount for Laverne Business Center, tax map 14, parcel 46.01 requested by Kim Lee Horn, I-1 light industrial zoning district. Mr. Logan.
So this request is to set the bond amount for the Laverne Business Center, and Kim Lee Horn is submitting this on behalf of their client. Of course, the Laverne Business Center property has been planted into two lots, two industrial zoned lots. So per the subdivision regulations, the developer has submitted three construction bids, an average plus the required 20% contingency and a stamped estimate provided by the engineer. The bids came from Arco, DF Chase, Paving Company, and Carol Daniel, and the engineer's estimate comes to $3,133,903. And that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments?
Question, staff, just another question. On the third bid, a million dollars less than the other two. Is there a reason for that?
I will defer that to the engineer. In the modern climate, that's less rare than I would wish, because we're seeing it a lot, but I'll let Mr. Hildemire.
Name and address, please, sir.
Deaton Hildebrand, excuse me, with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, 2127 Melody Drive, Franklin, Tennessee. I don't, to be honest, I don't know the full, you know, I haven't seen the line item, bid items through for that contractor. I know different contractors have different scope of work, but when we followed up with them, you know, making sure it was the correct scope of work, the correct scope of work on site, they had it in there in their letter. I think it was the Carol Daniels bid was the one that was coming in significantly less. It was, you know, confirming that it was all the off-site plans and scope that we had in there, less the work that's in the TDOT scope for the bid. And they all, you know, the set we sent them was the set that was approved at planning commission, so don't know the full details, but they all did receive the same set, and we confirm that it's all the same scope of work that they have in there. I haven't seen the full bids for the site package, too, so I don't know if there's different things they're considering in there.
Staff, are you satisfied with the total number? There you go, good number?
The number, just a correction, they did resubmit one after this form was filled out. The actual performance bond amount is $3,499,033. That's what's in your package.
And the delta on that, I think I mentioned at the workshop, was we included the cost of the traffic signal in that revised number. There were some back and forth with staff and TDOT, because technically the signal's on TDOT's road, but TDOT is saying that, you know, it's a city project, but the work we're doing in the lanes in Murfreesboro Road is a TDOT project, so that's what that is, went up to add the traffic signal, but the bids did not change in there.
So we have a broken calculator. The Carol Daniel bid, I'm looking at seven and a half, 250, that's a million, another million two, that's 2.2. I'm at about 2.7 million on that bid.
I'm just looking at the cover sheet, yeah.
All right, give me a second. Let me go through.
It's just the old broken calculator. We forgot a line item or two.
That's one of the reasons why we get three bids.
Yeah, yeah.
Give me a second.
I'm at about 2.7, just a quick math.
Does that then change the aggregate plus the contingency?
Yeah.
It does, yeah.
Okay. Give me a second here. Sorry.
So it's page 16. What page is that? That's our peg, 167. I may have to be proud.
Good job. I'm getting around 1.9 on the Carol Daniel bid. Let me make sure, because I'm including the traffic signal, which is about 250K, the... the traffic signal, which is about 250K, the off-site improvements that says City Laverne on one page six, and so that's about 594, or five, yeah, sorry, 594. The off-site improvements, the one below that, 564. And then, the utilities, which is the 521, around there, and then, so throwing that in, that gets me right around to the number in there.
So, you're not including the, the first one, the off-site?
The first one, that's, oh, sorry, that's for the TDOT work on Murfreesboro Road, we have to bond that separately with TDOT.
All right.
So, we post a bond for that with TDOT directly.
And they, and we talked with them about that, they're going to get us all the information on that bond with TDOT, so we'll have it in our files also.
TDOT has a little bit different of a bonding system in there, different requirements from the city, so we, that's why we asked them to break it up, and that's why, the traffic signal, our original assumption was that was going to be bonded with TDOT, we got that additional information. So, it's basically every, on the Carol, using the Carol Daniels page, for instance, it's everything less that first item is city scope of work for the off-site improvements.
That makes sense, then.
Gary, so what's the, the total that you've got? Okay. I'm going to make a motion to set the bond amount at $3,499,043.30.
Second.
A motion as stated with a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 15. Discussion Parking Ratios in the Zoning Ordinance.
That's me, and I'm prepared this time, so everyone got some information that Bo sent out. Essentially, this was sent over and looked at with our Economic Development Department, where we're doing mixed-use developments. And so, one of the things that was looked at was the parking requirements. And so, for multifamily, the city of Laverne requires three spaces per unit. Nolansville is two units, I'm sorry, two stalls per unit townhouse, one per apartment. Smyrna is two stalls per unit. Spring Hill, two stalls per unit, and then, one visitor space for every eight dwellings. Gallatin, one bedroom is one and a half, two bedrooms is two spaces. Mount Juliet, one and a half for one bedroom, two for two bedrooms. Murfreesboro, one for, one per bedroom. Brentwood, two per residential. And then, Lebanon, one space per dwelling unit. So, we're higher on average, I would say, about one space, everyone's about one to two, one and a half to two, whereas we're at three. And so, what I'd like for the board to do, to consider is just to get us on the same playing field as our surrounding community. This way, we would have more space that doesn't have to be asphalt, whether it can be freed up for retail, whether it can be freed up for green space versus more asphalt. So, thoughts, ideas? From anybody?
I suppose my comment is presently in our ordinance, we have two sets, one is for public roads, and then we have another set of parking for gated communities, where the gated community is by somebody else. So, we want to make sure we, we tackle this correct for the either one. So, that way, we're, we're changing, getting the rules or getting the parking spaces as agreed, set up, and make sure we get it where it needs to be.
Is there a, like a requirement, do we have anything that requires a certain amount of green space when we're looking at these projects, or, or is it, can it be as much pavement as you want?
Mr. Logan?
The new ordinance that is not adopted yet does have green space requirements. Currently, the current one does not.
Basically, we bring in some balance across the board.
And it gets us to the point where we're, we're going to stay competitive with our neighbors versus having a higher requirement, which is then more money being spent by the developers, by the builders, whoever they are. And I'm not so much concerned about, necessarily about them spending the money, but as far as our community is more asphalt and parking what we want compared to what we've got surrounding us.
Will we plan on having something for workshop?
Well, I wanted to get everyone's feedback first, and then, kind of go from there.
Um, just in my head, I'm looking at one bedroom, one and a half spots, two bedroom, two spots, and I do like that stipulation, and three bedrooms, probably two spots. I do like the stipulation about per eight units, you have a guest or visitor, you know, whatever that number is, I'm feeling eight's probably a good number, out of eight families, you know, somebody's got a visitor, you know, every night.
So, that's...
So, I like that visitor caveat, but I'm in one and a half for one, two for two or three, and then, one per eight visitor, I mean, one visitor spot for eight units. I like that caveat. And we're not going to hit that three number, three number's too high right now, I agree. And I'd rather look at more trees than, than pavement.
Agreed.
Would the expectation be more greenery versus the, the parking spots, or is it going to be greenery or these other ideas?
It could be greenery, it could be, like with mixed use, it could be more retail, it could be a plethora. It just, it would not lock them into being asphalt parking.
Yeah.
Because my only concern is street parking. So, if it's something, if we have the caveat of the, every so many units, we have a visitor, then, okay, cool, fine, but I think if it just goes to one, one and a half, two per, you know, unit, then I think you're going to run into that, which will be almost counterintuitive. So, I think if it's, hey, no, it's greenery, okay, fine, but if it's greenery or this, then where does that stretch the, what can go there?
Well, the, if you think about it like this, let's say you've got 150 acre, or 100-acre development, because 100 acre is, we have, we still have a few lots that are right near that. And if it comes in as a mixed use, where you can have residential and commercial, then that would be one where you could free up another out parcel, or depending on the size, another strip mall, or it just depends on how big the development it is. Because we're getting more mixed use. IDB's working on that, Economic Development's getting that left and right, and it's just, it's, that's kind of where the market go, is going right now. So, it's just, it's trying to find a balance so that we're not locked into just asphalt.
So, to some extent, it'd be case-by-case basis, then, yes?
Yeah, we would still get a site plan.
Okay.
They just, they would be locked into whatever design we have for, for a number of parking spots. And then, with any excess land, that comes in on the site plan, and we determine that. You know, we determine how it, you know, looks, feels, if something needs to be moved, if they need a lift in their car park. So, so any of that.
Okay.
Comments?
One parking space per bedroom. And then, I guess maybe the, if we, we don't have that many three-bedroom develop, units here, do we, or would you just do two park for three-bedroom and two for two, or?
A lot of the ones I've been running into is one and two, Graham, the ones you've talked to, have they said how they are yet?
It's going to be mixed, I mean, one, two, and three, but predominantly, they've pushed more one and two units than the other threes. The threes don't sell so well, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I was going to say, this may not be appropriate to this conversation, but I, my one concern with the green space is that currently, there is no, there's no regulation to prevent cars from parking on green space. If you drive through residential development, Lake Forest in particular, there's cars parked all over the place, very unsightly. I actually focused, not knowing what exactly this topic was covering, I went and focused on the residential requirements, and I think there's some opportunity, and that may be revisited at the subdivision, you know, regulations, if we revisit that in the future, but I'm concerned that we're going to have residential townhomes with these parking spaces, and then you may have trucks and cars and that parking on the green space, because they don't have enough space where they're at, so I want to voice that.
Typically, from what we've been seeing, they have HOAs.
Okay.
Because of the open space, and the, the HOAs can limit that or restrict it, they can find people. With the single-family homes, I think we did a pretty good job of the zoning ordinance, the one that's going to come up to, for vote for this year, to increase driveway capacity and, and garage accessibility for those that have, that opt for garages, to try to prevent that, that, prevent from future parking on the grass. Of course, we can't go back and change the sins of the past, but we spent a good couple months on that part, just working on the, the way it would work with the sidewalks and the driveway, and how many cars you could fit in there.
Right. And I do see encroachment, we did a good job a few years ago clearing out vehicles that are parking on sidewalks, you know, that pedestrians could use, and I'm starting to see that again. I could bring that forward, I need to, I just, I can make a phone call on codes or, or whatever, but I just think it's, I definitely feel like it's something we need to look at and to see, because I don't think it looks slightly for our city, and that's where I stand on it.
I personally agree across the board, and would like to see something on paper so we can try and move forward.
Okay. Work with Mr. Brown on something for workshop.
Any other questions or comments on this item? And our final item, bonds and letters of credit update, Williams.
Good evening, Commissioners. You should have the bond list in front of you, it is current and up to date, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions for the, for this item? With that, thank everybody for their time, meeting adjourned.